Okay. Tell the Holy Spirit that my words be yours. There was a lot of reading in this section, as you may have noticed. What? Um, yes. So hopefully, hopefully everybody survived the reading. Because there was a lot of reading, there was a lot of story. And this is about four hours worth of story that I have to get into one hour. So if I go a little bit over one and you have to go, that's fine. Um, we'll try to get the whole story in today, but there's a lot of action today. I want to begin by telling you a little story about my kids. I don't think I told you this one yet. Shortly after we moved here, we didn't really know anybody. And, um, we always sit up in the front, if you haven't noticed. And the reason we do is because when our two daughters, when they were younger, especially Hannah, she never really made it through a whole mass. Um, we usually have to take her out. We usually kind of adopted that room up in the front of the churches, our cry room. And it was my job, a lot of times, to help get her through mass. Because we'd bring this little bag of snacks. There'd be like Cheerios or, you know, something in them. But she caught on with her little bag of nuts. And, uh, she had to have that. It was my job as the dad to make sure that little bag was full. And one day I forgot to fill it up. And we got to mass and she ran out before mass even started. And she literally went nuts. She started going, "More nuts, more nuts, more nuts, more nuts." And, uh, she, she was probably about two and Isabel was about four. And Isabel's about that age where she wants to help. So she's not so quietly whispering to Hannah,[114.32][114.40]"Hannah, shh, you gotta be quiet. We're in church. You can't talk. Shh." You know, and Isabel's getting frustrated. Hannah's lost it. There's no off button with those kids. And, uh, you know, it's getting worse. So I looked at Kristen, I'm like, "We gotta get out of here. Mass hasn't even started yet. The place is quiet. Everybody's staring at us. We're still kind of new to the area." And, uh, so we start grabbing our things. We grab our bags. We each grab a kid. Right about the time we stood up, Isabel loses it. And she looks at Hannah and says, "Hannah, Daddy doesn't have any nuts." Kid's bringing a whole new meaning to the word "sacrifice of the land." But I wanted to start with that story because when I was in high school, if you said to somebody, "You don't have any nuts," that was slang for, "You don't have any courage." And the theme of today is courage. Last time, we talked a lot about freedom. We just came through Egypt and Exodus. They were enslaved for 400 years. Moses let them out of Egypt. And they're in the desert because they wouldn't listen to, they wouldn't obey God. They wouldn't trust God. They've been wandering around in the desert. It was all about freedom, not so much freedom from Egypt, but freedom from worshiping all those false gods. They're kind of on to a boot camp now. God's taught them, "I am the one who's your God. You have to trust me." And remember, Moses messed up that one time. And God said, "You're not gonna leave the people into the promised land." And also have to remember, we have three promises that he gave Abraham. You got the land, the royal dynasty, and the worldwide blessing. We're about to fulfill the first promise. We're about to go into the land. After 40 years of wandering around, this is where we left off. They're on the plains of Moat, looking across the Jordan River. They can see the promised land. They can see Jericho. And Joshua, this is the next book that we're reading, Joshua's gonna take over as the new leader for Moses. Moses has been their leader for 40 years. And I can relate to Joshua in this situation. Imagine how Joshua must be feeling. Let me tell you a little bit about what they're trying to do. They're trying to go into this promised land. And what is this land like? This is an advanced culture. They are way ahead of the Israelites when it comes to agriculture. They have fortified cities. There's giants in the land. They're obviously very successful at everything they're doing. And a lot of times when a bigger culture and a smaller culture mix, the smaller culture, less advanced culture, kind of gets consumed by that greater culture. Which wouldn't be a bad thing, except these Canaanites worship many false gods. So they're very blessed land. It's a land flowing with milk and honey. They have fortified cities, but they worship false gods. And their god system was vast. And there was three principal gods, just to give you some background. There was El, and then there was Asher. They were kind of like married. And then they have a baby called Baal, a baby god called Baal. And Baal is the primary god. Baal's the god of fertility. He's the god of the water. So we're gonna run into this. And so basically, this land that we're going into, to put it bluntly, is kind of like the land that we live in. Kind of like the land that we live in. You know, there's very, a lot of success. There's also a lot of worshiping of false gods. And put yourself in Joshua's shoes. This is what he's up against. So remember how we left off, the Book of Deuteronomy, Moses' farewell speech. If you're gonna go into this land, you've gotta teach your children. If you're gonna go into this land, you have to know your faith. And Joshua's taking over here, and he has to be the leader. And I can relate because, you know, when I had a question, I always went to my father, you know? I asked my dad everything. And it was kind of like life was just a game, you know? I was out there, had my own job, had my own, you know, had a family, got my house. But it wasn't really like it really mattered. Because if I messed up, my dad was always there. You know, if I had a question like, "Dad, somebody just called me about insurance. What do I do?" "Dad, I was supposed to sign this mortgage. What do I do?" "Your dad, my car broke down. What do I do?" You know, I just called him and asked him what to do, you know? And he was always there. And I think it took my earthly father dying before I realized he even had a heavenly father. It wasn't until I lost my own father that I realized, you know, it was kind of scary. All of a sudden, you realize that life's not a game. If I don't mess up, then, if I mess up, then, you know, these kids aren't gonna get to eat. If I mess up, then we're gonna lose this house. If I don't, you know, I don't have anybody to go to anymore. It's up to me. I have to be the leader now. And that's where Joshua's at. Moses is gone. And he's gotta lead these people into a land where they worship all of these false gods. And Joshua is a good leader. His name, Jesus' name in Hebrew is Yesu, which is Joshua, very similar to Joshuas. Joshua's a good leader because he learns from the very start that it's not about him. You know, this whole book of Joshua, it's not about Joshua. It's about God. Because Joshua learns to trust God. And God tells him from the very start, "Do not be afraid." We read from chapter one, "God says to Joshua, 'I will be with you as I was with Moses. I will not leave you nor forsake you. Be firm and courageous, so that you may give this people possession of the land which I swore to their fathers I would give them above all. Be firm and courageous, taking care to observe the entire law which my servant Moses enjoyed. Do not swerve from it either to the right or to the left, that you may succeed wherever you go. Keep this book of the law on your lips, reciting day by day and by night, that you may observe carefully all that is written in it. Then you will successfully attain your goal. I command you, be firm and courageous. Do not fear, nor be dismayed, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go.'" Joshua feels a little bit better. How many times did he tell him to be firm and courageous? "Do not be afraid. I am with you. I am with you." You know, one of the things we wanna do, I gave everybody an evaluation form before you leave today. If you could fill that out, I'd be grateful. But one of the things that we look to do this next fall is maybe to form a ministry. And I thought of this when thinking of Joshua. You know, because if we're gonna be successful as fathers and as husbands, we gotta do what Joshua did. You know, we gotta put God first. You can't lead your family unless God is leading you. It's not about you. It's about God. We gotta learn to put God first. We can learn a lot about how Joshua leads these people, and he does a good job. So they're on the plains of Moat. They're looking into the promised land. And the first thing he does is he sends some spies over. He sends some spies over to check out the land. And this is where we read about Rahab in chapter two. And there's some very important things here. Rahab is going to be a very important part of the story. She's a harlot. And she kind of hides them as they're over there. You know, the Canaanites know they're there. They're looking for them. And Rahab protects them, and they're up on the roof. And she comes up and she talks to him. And he says, "Before the spies fell," this is chapter two, verse eight, "Before the spies fell asleep, Rahab came to them on the roof and said, 'I know that the Lord has given you the land; that a dread of you has come upon us; and that all the inhabitants of the land are overcome with fear of you; for we have heard how the Lord dried up the waters of the Red Sea before you when you came out of Egypt; and how you dealt with Sion and Og, the two kings of the Amorites beyond the Jordan, whom you've doomed to destruction. At these reports, we are disheartened. Everyone is discouraged because of you, since the Lord your God is God in heaven above and on earth below.'" Now that's important because a lot of people look at these stories in the Old Testament. And they think, "Well, this isn't the same God as the New Testament." Because there's a couple of these cities that they're gonna take over. And these are like city-states. It's not like they have one capital where they have to take out. They have their own little city-states. So they have to take over each city if they're gonna take over the land. And God has set the ban on some of these cities. Total destruction. His instructions are to just destroy the city, nothing to remain alive. And it seems like, "Well, that's not the God we know." You know, isn't it? And it kind of puts a fear in this, like God is unpredictable. You know, to make his story come true, what if he does that to me? What if he just decides to take me? You know, can we really trust God? And we see right here, and there's a lot of scripture verses that Jeff Cavins gives. And I don't have the time to go on to all of these. But these people have had many, many, many chances. And Rahab is telling them right here, "We have heard that your God, your Lord, is the Lord, the one God. We know what he's all about." And they've been warned. Remember the story of Nineveh? You know, those people repented, and he saved. But he said, "These people did not repent." They've had over 400 years to turn from their ways. And God even says in the scriptures, "I'm not giving you the land because of anything that you've done, but it's because of the iniquity of these people." And it's kind of like a cancer. You know, if I had cancer in my eye, I really like my eye. I like seeing out of my eye. But if you don't remove that cancer, if you don't remove the eye, it's gonna destroy the whole body. So when we see that some of these cities are under the ban, you know, God knows the heart of every man. We can't judge on this. But God came, and God is a merciful God. He's a very patient God. But he has a point where his cup is full. And we can't look at him like a sugar daddy, you know? He is a perfectly just God. So we see in this story of Rahab that they know that the God is the one true God. And Rahab ends up marrying one of, you know, because she and her family are saved because of her generosity. And she ends up marrying one of the Israelites. And she becomes the great, great grandmother of King David. She gets to play a very important role in the story. And we're gonna see three different women today, very, what Jeff Cavins calls, very shady ladies, become part of the bloodline of Jesus. You see him in the bloodline. There's only four in the Gospel of Matthew. He mentions four women in the bloodline. Three of them are in our story today. And of course, the fourth one is going to be married. So they're going into the land. And you can imagine what the Canaanites are thinking. You know, they've heard about these stories. They know what this God is like. They've heard about the Red Sea. But they're clinging to one hope, that they have to cross the Jordan River. And they worship the god Baal, you know, he's gonna save them here. That's their last clinging hope when they see all these Israelites coming to take over the land. And you can imagine the wind being knocked out of them when the Israelites take the ark of the covenant. And as soon as they step into the Jordan River, we got the Red Sea all over again. It parts the waters. And it says all the way to the city of Adon, Adam, which is 10 miles away. And the Jordan at flood stage is up to a mile wide. So this is kind of a big spectacle, just like the Red Sea. And you can imagine, if you worship the god of that water and you see a gold box step into that river and it just parts like that, I think you're gonna think, "Uh, we're in trouble. We're in trouble." And God gives some very weird instructions. Again, Joshua learns to be obedient, you know? They're just supposed to march around this city. On the seventh day, they march around the city seven times. They bow the trumpets, and the walls come down. And they take over the city of Jericho. And then, remember, the city's under the ban. They're not supposed to take any booty. Don't take any of the gold, the silver. Total destruction. And we read a little bit later, so one guy by the name of Achan steals some of the booty. And they go to fight their next battle out of a city which is much smaller, which should have been a piece of cake, Ai. And they get defeated. And they realize that somebody, somebody was, somebody was not obeying the Lord. And a good way to remember this is Achan, you know, his mother probably knew he had a reputation for doing bad things. And she heard about this, and she probably said, "Oh no, my Achan's back." They get defeated at Ai. And a good thing to remember about this is that there is no such thing as private sin. You know, a lot of the thing going around in the culture is now, "And what do I do in the privacy of my own home? It doesn't hurt anybody else." Wrong. If you don't become who you were created to be, the world will suffer. We're in this together. There's no such thing as private sin. And they see how this one man's sin causes one of their defeats. But they go on, and again, Joshua's a great leader. They go on to conquer the land. And that's what the whole book of Joshua is about. Can't even get into a lot of detail on all these different battles. But they go in and they conquer the land. And they take over city by city, but they don't get the whole land. God's gonna leave little pockets of their enemies because God wants them to always rely on him. So there's gonna be these little pockets, but they don't get the entire land. But they pretty much take over the land. And at the end of Joshua, they divide the land. And each tribe gets their own part of the land. And that's kind of what we read about there. And at the end of Joshua, Joshua gives his speech, much like Moses did, to his people. And he tells them, "You gotta serve the Lord." One of my favorite scriptures verses comes from Joshua. And actually, somebody gave me a plaque with this verse on it for Christmas. It's one of my favorite Christmas presents. And it says in this chapter 24, verse 14, "Now therefore fear the Lord and serve him completely and sincerely." This is what Joshua's saying to his people. "Fear the Lord and serve him completely and sincerely. Cast out the gods your fathers served beyond the river and in Egypt; and serve the Lord. If it does not please you to serve the Lord, decide today whom you will serve: the gods your fathers served beyond the river, or the gods of the Amorites, in whose country you are dwelling? But ask for me and my household; we will serve the Lord." "Ask for me and my household; we will serve the Lord." You know? And I encourage every father and husband to put that plaque up in their house. "We will serve the Lord. My house will serve the Lord." And how did the people respond to Joshua? They answered him, "We will still serve the Lord." Joshua therefore said to the people, "You are your own witnesses that you have chosen to serve the Lord." They replied, "We are indeed." "Now therefore put away the strange gods that are among you. Turn your hearts to the Lord, the God of Israel." Then the people promised to Joshua, "We will serve the Lord, our God, and obey his voice." "We will serve the Lord." Joshua's telling them, "If you live in this country, if you live in a land where they worship so many false gods, you've got to serve the Lord. You've got to teach your children the faith. Pass on the faith to your children." The same thing that Moses told them. "We've gotta teach our children. Do they listen? Do they listen?" This is where we move into the Book of Judges. Remember, they just promised to serve the Lord. Just promised. We get into the Book of Judges. And right after Joshua dies, this is what it says. "But once the rest of that generation were gathered to their fathers..." This is chapter two, verse 10. "...once the rest of the generation were gathered to their fathers, and a later generation arose that did not know the Lord; for what he had done for Israel, the Israelites offended the Lord by serving the Baals, abandoning the Lord, the God of their fathers, who had led them out of the land of Egypt. They followed the other gods of the various nations around them, and by their worship of these gods provoked the Lord. Because they had thus abandoned him and served Baal, the Asher, the anger of the Lord flared up against Israel, and he delivered them over to their plunderers who despoiled them. He allowed them to fall into the power of their enemies round about whom they were no longer able to withstand. Whatever they undertook, the Lord turned into disaster for them, as in his warning he had sworn he would do till they were in great distress. Even when the Lord raised up judges to deliver them from the power of their despoilers, they did not listen to their judges, but abandoned themselves to the worship of other gods. They were quick to stray from the way their fathers had taken. It did not follow their example of obedience to the commandments of the Lord." One generation later, they forgot their story. It took one generation, and they did not know the Lord. They did not know what he had done in Egypt. They did not know. And that is a radical failure of the parents of this generation. They did not pass the faith on to their children. And I'm telling you, we are living in the time of the Judges. Put ourselves into this story. As you read the Book of the Judges in Joshua, and put ourselves in the story. We have to teach our children the faith. We have to be the primary educators. Otherwise, they would be consumed by those false gods of the culture around them. And the Lord told them what would happen. Right at the beginning of chapter two, Judges, chapter two, "An angel of the Lord went from Gilgath to Bohem and said, 'It was I who brought you up from Egypt and led you into the land which I promised on oath to your fathers. I said that I would never break my covenant with you, but that you were not to make a pact with the inhabitants of this land, and you were to pull down their altars. Yet you have not obeyed.' What did you mean by this? For now I tell you, I will not clear them out of your way. They shall oppose you, and their God shall become a snare for you.'" They will come a snare for you. The punishment for the sin is kind of the enjoyment of the sin. Think of pornography, and how many people are addicted to that? You know, there was a time that maybe they could live in that land, and it wouldn't bother them. But once they fall for that God, once they fall for that false God, it will give them problems for the rest of their lives. It will become a snare for them, and they will have trouble overtaking them. If they stop serving the Lord, their enemies will overtake them. And that is what the Book of Judges is, the whole book. It's a vicious cycle, over and over. Let me give you a taste of what the cycle is like. It's on your map here. There's 12 Judges in all. And this is how it works. The people sin, and their enemies overtake them. That's servitude. They ask for help. That's supplication. They cry out, "Help us." And then the Lord sends them a judge, a deliverer. And then there's silence in the land again. They're fine. And then they sin again. And this happens over and over. Let me give you examples, so you can mark it. You can go through the whole Book of Judges, and you can mark it. You can say, "Okay, there's the sin. Now they're serving. They're crying out for help. There's the judge. There's the silence." And this is how it works. If you have it marked, you can turn to chapter three, verse 7. It's about the judge Othniel. And it says, verse 7, "Because the Israelites had offended the Lord by forgetting their Lord, their God, and serving the Baals and the Ashers, the anger of the Lord flared up against them; and he allowed them to fall into the power of Cushen of Rishel," King of Arim, King David's word, "whom they served for eight years." So you see what happened there? They forgot the Lord. They served the Baals and the Ashers. The anger of the Lord flared up. He allowed their enemies to overtake them. That's servitude. He allowed their enemies to overtake them. And they served for eight years. And then they cried out for help. It says, "But when the Israelites cried out to the Lord," that's supplication, "Help us," that's verse nine, "he raised up for them a savior, Othniel." That's the judge. That's salvation. Son of Caleb's younger brother, King Gethi, who rescued them. If we read a little bit further down, in verse 11, it says, "The land then was at rest for forty years." So there's the silence. Do you see how that cycle worked? You can go through this whole book, and you can mark off and see, sin, servitude, supplication, salvation, silence. We think to ourselves, "Why don't these people get it? They keep doing the same things over and over and over again." You know? But all we have to do is look in the mirror. Why don't I get it? You know, just last weekend, on Saturday morning, I went to mass, and then there was confession after mass. And my wife, after mass, I was sitting there waiting to go to confession. And Kristen texted me, and that's a red flag right there because she doesn't even know how to text. Anytime she contacts me when I'm in Finley or something, I know that she wants me to run an errand. I know that's what she's calling for. So I called her back, and she had an errand for me. She's like, "Well, she had a bridal shower to go to. And she was trying to purchase something at Kohl's. And she's a little frugal, which is good. But at the same time, she wanted me to go to Kohl's and go on their little registry thing in the store and buy it because they don't want to have to pay shipping." I don't like shopping. I don't like going to Kohl's. And I'm like, "All right, I just came out." And let me make a public confession here. My primary vice is I am not very patient. I struggle with patience, and I just explained that in confession. And I need to work on that. And I'm like, "All right, I'm gonna go." And I went in there, and you can't get cell phone signal sitting on Kohl's if you've ever been there. I'm walking around, and I'm trying to find the little machine, and going in and out of service. And she's trying to explain to me some kind of cookie cutter that she wants. And I'm on this thing, and it's not working. And I was there for 45 minutes. And I was physically upset. I think the store people were avoiding me. I was mad. This isn't working. And I thought I was done, and then it won my email. And then I wanted to confirm my email. I really don't want to give you my email, but then I wanted to confirm it. And then apparently, I misspelled that. And then I got to the end, finally, and it said, "Sorry, this is no longer available." I'm not kidding. You made me pull this out for 45 minutes to tell me it's not available. And I just realized that I was supposed to work on being patient. We do the same things over and over and over and over again. You know, we struggle. So before we put the judge, these people in the Judges, again, put yourself into the story. We don't have the time to go through all the Judges. But there's two in particular I'll just talk about. One is Gideon. You know, a lot of people are familiar with the story of Gideon. And Gideon is kind of a guy. He's out in the middle of nowhere. He's from the weakest tribe and the weakest family. And he's just out doing his job. And the angel of the Lord comes to him, and he's like, "You got the wrong guy. I'm not leading anybody into battle. I'm just somebody." And God can find whoever he wants, and he'll use whoever he wants. You know, you could be out milking the cows, and he'll find you. We're gonna see this later with King David. And so he takes Gideon. And one thing he wants the people to learn in this story with Gideon is that it's not them, it's God that's delivering them. And you see this process where he keeps lowering the number of men. It started with like 30,000 men. He puts them down to 300. And he actually says, "You have too many soldiers with you." This is chapter seven, verse 2. "The Lord said to Gideon, 'You have too many soldiers with you for me to just deliver the Midian into their power, lest Israel bond itself against me and say, 'My own power brought me the victory.'" So God doesn't want them to think that they're doing anything because they're all about, "It's all about me. It's all about the Lord." And Gideon asks an interesting question. "When the angel of the Lord appeared to him," this is chapter six, verse 11 and 12, "The angel of the Lord appeared to him and said, 'The Lord is with you, O champion.'" My Lord, Gideon said to him, "If the Lord is with us, why has all this happened to us? Where are the wonders heathed of which our fathers told us?" So Gideon's asking a very reasonable question. If you're with us, then why are our enemies keep overtaking us? Well, could it be because of us? Could it be because of us? Again, put our own selves into this culture, into this story, or culture into this story. There's been a lot of stuff about the Catholic Church in the news recently. You know, I know you've heard about the health mandate and the letter from Bishop Blair that I hope he read in the Bulletin this week. And we ask ourselves, "Why does this happen to us?" And one of the reasons they gave for enforcing this law, which forces Catholic institutions to violate their consciousness, one of the reasons they said was because 98% of Catholics use this stuff anyway. 98% of them do. So their reasoning is that Catholics don't follow their own beliefs. So why should we? Why should we make laws based on what they believe? Sometimes we bring things upon ourselves.[1734.32] Sometimes, we bring things upon ourselves. We have to step up, we have to defend our faith, we have to know our faith, we have to teach the faith to our children. Again, we learn these stories over and over and over again. So, Gideon gets this, he goes through a thing of testing the Lord, a lot of us do that too, you know. "If you want me to go out with this woman, then may the sky be sunny today," or something like that, "if you want me to ask this girl out." You know, we throw these kind of weird tests at the Lord, and Gideon does this with the fleece, you know. "If you're really with me, then make the fleece be wet," or "If you're really with me, make the fleece be dry." So, we see kind of the immaturity of Gideon, but he goes through a pretty quick growing-up process, because when Gideon delivers them from the Midianites, at the end, "The Israelites then said to Gideon, 'Rule over us, you, your son, and your son's son, for you rescued us from the power of Midian.' But Gideon answered them, 'I will not rule over you, nor shall my son rule over you. The Lord must rule over you.'" We're starting to get a hint here. What do these people want? They want a king, you know? It's kind of speaking of, what's our second thing we're looking for? A royal dynasty. That's what a dynasty, "My son and his son will rule over you," that's a dynasty. People were looking for a king. They don't get it that God is king. We don't get it either. Our country, the United States of America, is founded on the belief that God is our king. We don't have a human king. It's truly founded on good principles, that God is our king, and that we are a free country. But we're only free inasmuch as we do as what God wants us to do. We're only free when we choose to do what is right. And what happens when we make up our own laws, and we stop following the Lord? We become enslaved, our enemies take over us. Our enemies take over us. And freedom is not about being free from external restraints that keep us from doing the things we want to do. It's about being free from internal restraints that keep us from doing the things we should do. That's a free country. And if we stop serving the Lord, we will not be free. We will not be free. We need to learn this lesson, that Gideon learns that the Lord is our king, but the people aren't gonna get it. So, that's Midian. The other story I'll just mention very quickly is Samson, because everybody likes that story. You know, the story of Samson and Delilah. Samson's from the tribe of Dan, and they always have trouble down there with the Philistines, they're kind of in the southern part of the country. And Samson has the Nazirite vow, "No grazer shall touch his head." His strength comes from this vow, that his hair has grown really long, and he falls in, well, he's pretty good with, he's a ladies' man, you know, so he's always flirting with the ladies and the Philistine ladies. And this woman, Delilah, the Philistines get to trick Samson into telling her his secrets. And the story is very clever in Hebrew, because Samson means day or light, and Delilah means night. And the whole theme of the story is the night of the Philistines eclipses the day of the Israelites, because Samson gives away his Nazirite vow, he breaks that covenant with the Lord, and he loses his strength. He loses his strength. So, it's a neat story, a very popular story, but we don't have a lot of time to get into a lot of these stories, but read them. So, we come to the end of the book of Judges, and again, these stories are hard to read. You know the story with the Benjamites and the concubine, and what they did? You think to yourself, "Yeah, I don't even want to read this anymore." If you don't want to read this, then do me a favor, never watch the news again, because you are living in the time of the Judges. Just a thought, you know? So, the story, the end of Judges, the very last verse of Judges, chapter 21, verse 25, "And in those days there was no king in Israel; everyone did what was right in his own eyes." Does that sound familiar? "Everyone did what was right in his own eyes." Again, we're living in the time of the Judges. So, the next story I want to talk about is Ruth. It's a supplemental book. It's right after the book of Judges, but it fits right in the middle of Judges. And it's a wonderful story, it's only four chapters. So, read the book of Ruth. It's a wonderful story about Ruth. And there's a man, Eli Melik, and his wife Naomi. And there's a famine in the land, and they take their famine, their two sons, and they move back over across the Jordan, the plains of Boaz. And their two sons meet these two women, Ruth and Orpah. Ruth and Orpah. But tragedy hits, you know, Eli Melik dies, the two sons die, so they're left with Naomi and these two daughters, or her two daughters in laws. And Orpah says, "I'm going back, I'm staying in my land, going back." And Ruth tells, or Naomi tells Ruth to do the same thing, in chapter one, verse 16. Ruth says, or that verse 15, she says, "See now," she said, "Your sister-in-law has gone back to her people and her god. Go back after your sister-in-law." But Ruth said, and this is key, Ruth is very quick-witted, and she thinks to herself, "If I come up with the right line here, they'll be used in weddings for years to come." And she says, "Do not ask me to abandon or forsake you; for wherever you go, I will go; wherever you lodge, I will lodge; your people shall be my people, and your god, my god." So, in the midst of the Judges, in the midst of a people who have one god, who keep worshiping false gods, we have a Moabite, a non-Jew, who's supposed to be worshiping many gods, who says, "I will worship the one god." So, we have a Moabite, a stranger, being brought, end of the story, because she goes back with Ruth, and she meets her kindred redeemer, what is called Boaz. And who's Boaz? She, or he is the son of Rahab, the son of Rahab. And they fall in love, and they end up getting married, and they have a son named Obad. And then, after Obad, you have Jesse, they have a son named Jesse. And who does Jesse have? David. David. So, Ruth was just out leaning in the fields before she meets Boaz. She was just 10 minutes away from meeting this man. She was 10 minutes away from becoming part of the greatest story in the history of the world. 10 minutes away from 3,000 years later, 100 people in a gym in New York talking about it. 10 minutes away. Never know, you never know where the Lord will find you and how you will play a part in this story. That's where we go in the salvation history. She's right here in the timeline. Who else? Ruth. You know, Rahab, Ruth. We're gonna see one more shady lady coming up here in our story in a little bit. So, that's the story of the Judges. And now, we move on into Samuel. And the nice thing about having all this reading at least was that you should have been reading it anyway, if you were following the readings of daily Mass, because a lot of these readings were right along with what we're reading right now, the book of Samuel. And Samuel is about a woman by the name of Hannah, a woman by the name of Hannah, who wants children, but she's not been able to have any children. And she's crying out to the Lord, "Please give me a child, and I will offer him back to you." And Hannah is a good mother. She's a good mother. She's going to give her child, she's praying to the Lord, saying, "If you give me a child, I will give the child back to you," which is what all mothers should do, what all fathers should do, you know? Give their children back to the Lord. What a beautiful thought. Think of the story of Abraham and Isaac. And Abraham has to take his son to Moriah, his only beloved son, and offer him as a sacrifice. Remember the story of Moriah. We all need to be taking our children, our gifts, to Moriah, that place, because that's what God's going to do. He's going to take his son to Moriah. He will never be outdone, and gratitude will never be outdone, and graciousness, you know, if we think we're giving gifts, he will give them back to us tenfold. If we offer our children to the Lord, he will do great things for us. And in the end, we see that he gives his own son back to us on that very same place, Moriah. So, think of this sacrifice that Hannah's making, and put that into your life. Offer your children back to the Lord. So, her son's name, she has a son, and his name is Samuel. And she offers him back to the Lord, and he's under the care of his priest. And this was in the readings a couple weeks ago, the priest Eli, and they had this conversation when they're sleeping, you know, and Samuel starts hearing this voice, and he comes to Eli and says, "You called me?" He's like, "I didn't call you, go back to sleep." It says, "This happens again, and it happens again." Finally, Eli realizes the Lord is speaking to him. So, he tells Samuel, again, one of my favorite verses in all of Scripture, "Go to sleep, and if you are called, reply, 'Speak, Lord, for your servant is listening.'" "Speak, Lord, for your servant is listening." You know, anytime you sit in adoration, you sit in silence, you know, we have two years with one mouth, you need to spend a little more time listening. You know, and last quarter, St. Wedlin has adoration like 24 hours a day, all week, and I'd signed up for theirs, like it's 2:00 in the morning on Friday mornings, and it was just so peaceful. You just sit in there in the middle of the night, just 2:00 in the morning, and you sit there, and you say, "Speak, Lord, your servant is listening." Remember that line, remember that verse, "Speak, Lord, the servant is listening." And Samuel becomes a prophet of the Lord. He's actually like the 13th judge. He's also a prophet. He's gonna lead these people and guide them. And then, we have the story in chapter four, where they lose the ark of the covenant. The Philistines take over, and they lose a battle to the Philistines, and they lose the ark of the covenant. And this is kind of a funny story, chapter five, "The Ark in the Temple of Dagon." And Dagon is one of the false gods that they worship. And it says in chapter five, "The Philistines, having captured the ark of God, transferred it from Ebenezer to Ashdod, they then took the ark of God and brought it into the temple of Dagon, placing it beside Dagon, where the people of Ashdod arose early the next morning. Dagon was lying prone on the ground before the ark of the Lord." That's weird. "So, they picked up Dagon and replaced him. But the next morning, early, when they arose, Dagon lay prone on the ground before the ark of the Lord, and his head and hands broken off, lying on the threshold, his trunk alone but untapped." The first time they think about, the second time, they were probably like, "Dagonic! You know, he's fallen over." That was a joke. But the Lord, again, is demonstrating himself to these false gods. And finally, in their life, all these bad things keep happening to them, so what do they do? They send the ark of the covenant back, and like, "Sorry, take your god back, because he's killing us over here." So, they get the ark back. And then, chapter eight is a very important chapter, 1 Samuel, chapter eight. They request a king. This is where they request a king. And this is a neat conversation. Samuel's their prophet, so they're gonna speak to the Lord through Samuel. And it says in chapter, chapter eight, verse four, "Therefore, all the elders of Israel came in a body to Samuel, Ramon, and said to him, 'Now that you are old and your sons do not follow your example, appoint a king over us, as other nations have to judges.'" So, what do they want? They want a king, because everybody else has a king. We want a king. They're asking for a king. And Samuel was displeased when they asked for a king to judge them. Why? Because Samuel knows the Lord is their king. He prayed to the Lord, however, who said in answer, "Grant the peoples every request. It is not you they reject; they are rejecting me as their king, as they have treated me constantly from the day I brought them up from Egypt to this day, deserting me and worshiping strange gods, so they do treat you too. Now grant their request, but at the same time warn them solemnly and inform them of the rights of the king who will rule them." So, God's saying, "All right, I'm gonna give you a king, but I'm warning you right now, this is what's gonna happen when you get a king." The rights of the king, this is in verse 11, "The rights of the king who will rule over you will be as follows: He will take your sons and assign them to his chariots and horses, and they will run before his chariot. He will also appoint among them his commanders of groups of a thousand and hundred soldiers. He will set them to do his plowing and his harvesting, and make his implements of war and equipment of his chariots. He will use your daughters as ointment-makers and cooks and his bakers. He will take the best of your fields, vineyards, and olive groves, and give them to his officials. He will tithe your crops and your vineyards. He will give revenue to his eunuchs and his slaves. He will take your male and female servants, as well as your best oxen and your asses, and use them to do his work. He will tithe them, your flocks, and you yourselves will become his slaves. And when this takes place, you will complain against the king who you have chosen. But the Lord, when you complain to the Lord, he will not answer you." He's telling you right up front, you know? This is what the king's gonna do to you. And what do the people say? Bring it on. We'll take it. We want somebody to rule over us, you know? God wants to be their king. I mean, this is evident, God wants to be their king. But he's saying, "Give them what they want, give them what they want, but in the end, I will get what I want, because God will come as the Word made flesh, and he will be their king. But it will come at an extreme cost, and we'll see what they do to their king. The king of the Jews will be crucified, he will lose his life to be their king, but in the end, he will get what he wants." So, this is a valid kind of parenting technique, you know, "Give them what they want, but in the end, I'll get what I want." That's why I said, you know, they want cartoons, give them what they want, but if you give them Veggie Tales, they're also get what I want, which is the story of salvation history. So, give them what they want wrapped in what they need, is what he's doing here. He's kind of heeding to their demands. So, the first king is King Saul, and Saul's job is to unite the kingdom. He's from the tribe of Benjamin, and he actually does a pretty good job of uniting the kingdom, but he makes two major mistakes. They're in chapters 13 and chapter 15. The first one in chapter 13, he offers a sacrifice when he's not supposed to. Why does he do it? Because he's afraid the people are gonna leave him. You know, he's too worried about what people think about him, and he offers a sacrifice when he's not supposed to, and he's reproved. It says in chapter 13, verse 10, "He had just finished this offering when Samuel arrived. Saul went out to greet him, and Samuel asked him, 'What have you done?' Saul replied, 'I saw the men who were slipping away from me, since you had not come by the specified time. The Philistines assembled at Micmash. I said to myself, 'Now the Philistines will come down on me at Gilgath, and I have not yet sought the Lord's blessings. So, in my anxiety, I offered up the Holocaust.'" Samuel's response was, "You have been foolish. Had you kept the command of the Lord your god gave you, the Lord would now establish your kingship in Israel as lasting." He's saying, "If you would have just obeyed the Lord, you would have had a kingdom forever. But as things are, your kingdom shall not endure. The Lord has sought out a man after his own heart and has appointed him commander of his people, because you broke the Lord's command." So, the blessing of the Lord has just left Saul. He's no longer the anointing, he's disobedient. His second act of disobedience comes in chapter 15. In chapter 15, he was given another one of those instructions to destroy that whole city, you know, the ban, and he spares the king and the best oxen and best animals, and Saul comes and says, "Did the Lord not tell you to destroy the whole city?" And Saul's response is kind of, it says, "They refused to carry out the doom on anything that was worthwhile, dooming only what was worth us that have no account." So, they're saving some things here. And his excuse was that he was gonna use these things as an offering to the Lord, you know? "I'm gonna use these best sheep and oxen, and I spared the king, because we wanted to offer them as a sacrifice to God." And Samuel's response to him is very, very good. This is chapter 15, verse 22. Samuel says, "Does the Lord so delight in holocaust and sacrifices as in obedience to the command of the Lord? Obedience is better than sacrifice." Obedience is better than, sacrifice is not for God's sake, it's for our sake. God doesn't walk around saying, "What can I do to make myself feel more godly? You know, I'm gonna make a good mess every Sunday." It's not for God, it's for you. It's for you. Obedience is what he wants. He wants us to serve, to listen to him for our own good. You know, and we fall for this trap all the time. You know, I was, you know, I do all these crazy things, like run marathons and do these like workout programs, and I said, "I'm gonna offer him up, you know, I'm gonna offer him up for all these people." And I was doing this workout one time in the basement, I was doing that thing called P90X, and like, "I'm gonna do this." And Ismael came down and said something about daddy, and my first response was like, "What? The man of God is working here, what do you want?" She said, "Will you play with me?" Or something like that. And she's done this many times, and sometimes I'd be like, sitting there studying, trying to think about what I'm gonna say, and I'd be like, "I don't have time to play with you right now, I'm trying to teach people how to be a good father, all right?" We get so wrapped up in it, and sometimes we use the excuse, "I'm doing it for the Lord." Are you really? Or are you doing it for yourself? You know, obedience is better than sacrifice, and that's the lesson we need to learn that King Saul did not learn. And we all screw up, and David's gonna screw up too, but the difference is how they respond. How does Saul respond when he realizes he screwed up? This is chapter 15, verse 30. "I have sinned." He says, he's saying, he's talking to Samuel, you know, kind of in private, there's a bunch of people here, it's kind of like they're talking in private, and he's like, "All right, I have sinned. Yet honor me now before the elders of my people and before Israel." He's worried about what people think of him, so he's just like, "All right, messed up, but honor me." So, these people think that I'm a good king. You know, that's his response. That's the difference between him and what King David is gonna do. You're gonna see how King David responds. So, then we get into the story of King David. Samuel goes, and he's anointed David, so he's, David sees the heart, or God sees the heart of David, and he wants David to be his next king. Saul's still the reigning king, but the throne's gonna be passed to David here, and they're having this battle with the Philistines. And this is the famous story of David and Goliath, and everybody knows this story. David's a little shepherd boy, you know, the least likely we would think to be king, you know? Samuel came, and out of all the sons of Jesse, he picks the little shepherd boy. He's kind of doing his thing out in the field. And David's coming to the field of battle basically just to give his brother some lunch. And the Philistines have made this challenge, you know? Our best man against your best man. You know, Goliath is this huge giant, and they're saying, "All right, fight one-on-one. Whoever wins will be the other one's servant." So David's coming, he's like, "What's going on here? What's going on?" And he's like, "I'll fight him." This little shepherd boy's like, "I'll fight him." And what David says to the giant is really bold. Goliath's kind of like making fun of the people, because they're afraid to fight. And David comes and answers him and says, "You come against me with sword and spear and shimmy, but I come against you with the name of the Lord of Host, the God of the armies of Israel that you have assaulted. Today the Lord shall deliver you into my hand. I will strike you down and cut off your head." Little shepherd boy's kind of cocky, you know? "This very day I will leave your corpses and the corpses of the Philistine army for the birds of the air and the beasts of the field, thus the whole land shall learn that Israel has a God. All this multitude too shall learn that it is not by sword or spear that the Lord saves; for the battle is the Lord's. He shall deliver you into our hands." So David has a right heart. He knows it's for the Lord. He trusts the Lord, you know, and he slays the Philistine. And after David wins this battle with Goliath, you know, all the women flock to him. And Saul gets extremely jealous. And then you go into this whole long chapters of where Saul is trying to find king, or he's not king yet, but he's trying to find David and kill him because of his jealousy. You know, Saul's upset. He says, "What else does he have to take from me but the throne?" So he's trying to kill David. And this is a good point to point out, again, in the supplemental books, the Psalms. This is where the Psalms, you know, the Psalms are written by David, you know? And he's fleeing Saul. And you can read the Psalms in the context of the story, and they make a little bit more sense. You know, and every Sunday, we read the Psalms, and sometimes they're like, "Yes, the Lord is wonderful and life is great." And sometimes they're like, "I am a horrible person." And this is, you know, the Psalms go up and down, just like our lives. We have valleys and peaks. And the Psalms are written by David. So, finally, King Saul and his son Jonathan are killed in Mount Gilboa. And David eventually takes over as the king of all of Israel. So David is anointed king. And if we move forward to... One interesting thing about Mount Gilboa that Jeff Cavins pointed out. When David learned that Saul and Jonathan had died, he wept, you know? No matter, even though Saul was trying to kill him all this time, David respected him because he was the king. And when he found out he died on Mount Gilboa, he wept, and he said, "Mountains of Gilboa, may they never be due nor rain upon..." And this is 2 Samuel, chapter 1, verse 21. And Jeff Cavins said, you know, he's been to the Holy Land like 20 times. And he said, "It's very interesting that one side of that mountain is bare. Nothing will grow on it, and nobody knows why." You know, so very interesting that David cursed this mountain. So David takes over as king, and he brings the Ark of the Covenant into Jerusalem. This is where the Ark comes to Jerusalem. And chapter 7, 2 Samuel, chapter 7, is when this covenant is really established. Remember, the second part of the promise is royal dynasty. And 2 Samuel, chapter 7, verse 12, says, "And when their time comes, and you rest with your ancestors, when you die, I will raise up your heir after you, sprung from your loins, and I will make his kingdom firm. It is he who shall build a house for my name, and I will make his royal throne firm forever. I will be a father to him, and he shall be a son to me. And if he does wrong, I will correct him with the rod of men and human chastisement. But I will not withdraw my favor from him, as I withdrew it from your predecessor Saul, whom I removed from my presence. Your house and your kingdom shall endure forever before me. Your throne shall stand firm forever." Forever. You know, and something to stand bold forever, there needs to be something that lasts forever. And we see that Jesus comes over and takes over this throne of David. And this covenant will last forever into eternity. So, we have the anointing here. King David is in Jerusalem, he gets the covenant. And let me take a quick break here. The next thing I wanted to point out was David's sin, which is in chapter 11. David's sin. And we know this story too, we just heard this in the readings not too long ago. David is up on the roof when everybody else is out of the war. David's a conqueror, but he's taking this one off, and he's out on the roof. He's up on the roof, and basically, he's playing on the internet. He comes across a sight that he shouldn't be looking at, and the sight is Bathsheba. And Bathsheba's a very beautiful woman. He sees baby, and he calls for her, and he lays with her. And not too long after that, he finds out, he gets word from Bathsheba that she's pregnant. And Bathsheba is the wife of Uriah, one of the soldiers. And now we have a problem pregnancy. We have a problem pregnancy. Whenever we have a problem pregnancy, what happens? Somebody must die. Somebody must die. Again, look at our culture. We have a problem pregnancy, and in this case, it's Uriah and the baby. They both die, because David comes up with this horrible, horrible idea. And his idea is, first, he gets Uriah back, and he tries to get him to go home and be with his wife, so that it can look like it's his child. But Uriah doesn't do it. He says, "No, I won't go home, I'm in the middle of a battle, and I'm not gonna leave my men." So, King David comes up with this plan to put Uriah at the front of the lines and have everybody else step back, so that he gets massacred. It's just a horrible, horrible plan, you know? And again, somebody must die. We try to cover up our mistakes by making somebody else suffer. And this is what happens here. And Nathan, the prophet, comes and kind of shows David what he did wrong in the form of a parable. And I mentioned Veggie Tales, and I think Veggie Tales portrays this just as good as anybody else in the story of King George and the Rubber Ducky. Bathsheba is the Rubber Ducky, by the way. But if you get a chance to watch that, it's great. But basically, the parable that Nathan gives him goes like this. He says, "There once was a man, a very rich man, and he had many, many, many lambs, many ewe lambs. And there was a poor man that only had one lamb, and he loved the lamb with all of his heart. It was like a family member to him. And the rich man had a guest, but instead of taking one of his own lambs, he took the lamb of the poor man." You know, and imagine Nathan's telling him this story, and David's getting furious. He's like, "Who did this? I wanna know who did this. This man deserves to die." And Nathan says, "You are that man. You are that man. You have many possessions, you have wives, and Uriah only had this one wife. You took her, and then you destroyed her." And David, you can imagine the way he knocked out of it. "I am that man, it was me." And this is where you see the difference between how Saul reacted and how King David reacts. Psalm 51. Psalm 51 is David's response to this parable. He says, "Have mercy on me, O God, in your goodness, and in the greatness of your compassion, wipe out my offense. Thoroughly wash me from my guilt and of my sin, cleanse me; for I acknowledge my offense, and my sin is always before me. Against you only I have sinned, and done what is evil in your sight." He goes on to say in verse 11, "Turn away your face from my sins, and blot out my guilt. A clean heart create for me, O God, and a steadfast spirit renew within me." You know, David is very remorseful. He calls out to God for mercy. "Look, I've messed up, you've messed up, we've all messed up. But what do we do when we mess up? Do we try to cover up our sin? Or we turn to the Lord and say, 'Have mercy on me.'" And Psalm 51 is a great song to read right before you go into confession. Bring it in there with you. You know, just read that song. "Have mercy, have mercy on me, O Lord, a sinner." So, the baby dies, but Bathsheba becomes his wife, and they have another son by the name of Shlomo. That's what the name means. But in English, it's Solomon. I like Solomon a little better than Shlomo. But Solomon, and Solomon is going to go on to become the next king. He's going to go on to become the next king. Another interesting verse I wanna point out real quick is in 2 Samuel, chapter 23. This is just a random verse called "David's Warriors." It's 2 Samuel 23, verse 8. And Jeff Cavings is so good at doing this Bible study, because he can take a verse that seems just meaningless, like, "Why is this even in the story?" And you can put great meaning to it. And he's talking about these three warriors of David. The first warrior, it says, "Killed over eight hundred men in a single encounter." You know, that's tenacity in the face of overwhelming odds. The second man is fighting, and all of his friends run away. And it says, "He grew tired, his hand grew tired, and became cramped, wanting fast to the sword." But the Lord brought about a great victory on that day. And then all his friends come back and take the booty. But he's so tired, his hands are kind of cramped, you know? And that's tenacity in the face of overwhelming fatigue. And the last one's my favorite, is this guy, he's guarding, it says, um... "Next to him was Sham, the son of Aggi, the herder." Right, this is verse 11. "The Philistines had assembled at Lea, where there was a plot of land full of lentils. When the soldiers fled from the Philistines, he took his stand in the middle of the plot and defended it. He slew the Philistines, and the Lord brought a great victory." So this guy is guarding, you know what lentils are? They're beans. This guy is guarding a bean field. He's guarding a bean field. But if it's important to the king, it's important to me. And we should think of our children in this way, you know? Because the world out there says, "They're just children." And in fact, you know, you got a lot of other things that you could be doing a lot better, a lot more important. There's a lot of things to do in the world, and you're gonna waste your time on these beans, on these beanie babies, on these children, you know? You know, that's the world's philosophy. That's what this healthcare mandate is all about. Sterilize everybody, because the disease is pregnancy. You know, we think to ourselves, "Nobody else will defend them, but it is my job to defend these beings. If it's important to the king, it's important to me. And I will lay down my life for them, even if the world says that they're inconvenient. I will lay down my life for them. I will fight so that they have a home that is pure, full of songs of praise to the Lord, stories of the saints and the gospels. I will make sure that every man that comes to take out my daughters knows my middle name." You know, I will protect this bean field. You know, and I think of my wife. You know, she is an educated woman. There's a lot of things that she could be doing with her life. And she chose to give her life to raise her children, to be there with them. And a lot of people think, "What a waste, what a white snow." She's laid down her life to protect what the world sees as seemingly insignificant. You know, the great cathedrals of Europe, they say, "Nobody really knows who built the great cathedrals, because they were built over so many years." And people say, "They probably couldn't build a cathedral like that today, because nobody's willing to sacrifice to that degree to build something they may never even see come to completion." She's building great cathedrals. She's building great cathedrals. And one day, those cathedrals will show the world the true love of God. They will reveal God to the world in his great beauty and his great mystery. You've got to be willing to have tenacity in the face of a seemingly insignificant mission. You know, saints are often seen, saints are often made an unseen task. You know, even though she may feel invisible sometimes, God sees everything that she does. You know, so, again, you can learn a lot from the Scriptures if you just meditate on them. King Solomon, this is the last thing we'll do, and then it'll be done here. King Solomon takes over the throne, and he's the wisest man in the world. He asks for wisdom, and God gives him wisdom. He's a very wise king, but he comes and he does, he turns into a very bad king at the end. One thing I wanna point out real quick in reference to Mary. You know, a lot of times, people think that we Catholics make up all this stuff about Mary being queen. And it comes from this story, it comes from the Scriptures. And we look at chapter 2. Chapter 2, verse 13. Bathsheba is the queen. It's not the wife of the king who is the queen, it's the mother, you know? Because the king often had many wives. The idea of a wife being the queen is a Western idea, you know? Originally, it was the mother who was the queen. And look how this interaction goes. The man comes to Bathsheba, the mother of Solomon, who is the king. She says, "Do you come as a friend?" She asks. "Yes," he answered, and added, "I have something to say to you." She replied, "Say it." So he said, "You know that the kingdom was mine, and all of Israel expected me to be king, but the kingdom escaped me and became my brothers, for the Lord gave it to him. But now there is one favor I would ask of you, do not refuse me." And she said, "Speak on." He said, "Please ask King Solomon, who will not refuse you, to give me Abishak the swnaite for my wife." "Very well," she replied. Or replied Bathsheba, "I will speak to the king for you." Then Bathsheba went to King Solomon to speak to him for Adonija, and the king stood up to meet her and paid her homage. Then he sat down upon his throne, and a throne was provided for the king's mother, who sat at his right. "There shall be one small favor I would ask of you," she said, "do not refuse me." "Ask it, my mother," the king said to her, "for I will not refuse you." You know, it kind of sounds like idolatry, doesn't it? No. You know, people would often go to the queen to ask for intercession to the king. The king has all the power, but the queen is very influential to the king. When we pray to Mary, we say, "Pray for us," because nobody's prayers are more powerful than the queen, the mother of our Lord. So, Solomon is a good king for a while, but he's not a fighter, he's a builder. He's the one that built the temple. Takes him seven years, again, think of creation, seven. Takes him seven years, he builds this temple. Hello? He builds the temple in seven years. But how does he build the temple? He's not fighting any wars anymore, he's not conquering lands, he's taxing. He's taxing the people, he's treating them harshly, he's using them as labor. Everything that God told him would happen starts happening. Solomon starts to be a tyrant, tyrant. And he starts to make all these pacts with other nations. And anytime he make a pact with another nation, they exchange a wife. And he gets 700 wives. Seven, you guys think you have a pact. 700 wives. And it says, "The wives turned his heart." He turned his, and he actually starts worshiping false gods, building temples for them. His heart was turned. And Solomon becomes a tyrant. And as Solomon's reign begins to end, the people are fed up. They're fed up, and his son's gonna take over in our next session. And they're gonna ask a question. Are you gonna be, they're gonna ask a question to Solomon's son. "Are you gonna be like your father?